Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, how are you?
Good.
It's been awhile.
You forgot about us.
Oh, no, I didn't. I didn't, not at all. No, it hasn't been much on the agenda, so I thought, well, you know, or unfortunately, Tuesday nights are very popular council meeting nights, so at times like, well, nothing on the agenda and I do have.
In my life.
Sometimes. Glad to be here.
Thank you, glad to have you guys.
Saw your sign out there and I almost panicked because it said City Hall is moving.
We have moved.
Okay, I thought maybe you moved your council meeting too.
No, we were down at the new building, the old Downer Bank, so.
Very good.
So Mr. Edelbrook's not here tonight, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot more packed than the last time I was here too.
Well, yeah.
It's good that it's not like now.
No, no, no.
Maybe that's the thing, I stopped coming and then all of a sudden it got quiet.
Then we get a packed house tonight. So has, did Councilwoman Mary call in or did she call anybody? I don't think so. Okay. You ready Josh?
Not really.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this council study session for Tuesday, September 27th, 22 at 6:00 PM. So, Old Business. Okay, we're gonna amend the agenda, moving Item B from New Business to the Council Meeting on New Business for Item C. So, Old Business, Discussion of Budget Retreat Location and Time. I put my mic on. Can you hear me Josh?
Yes ma'am.
So, we need to discuss the retreat location and time.
Have you guys thought of any places?
I believe we've had a discussion about that, me, I don't know if Madi wasn't on that discussion, but me, Josh, and Sylvia had a discussion on that. Josh?
Yep, so the mayor would like to have it here on the bank side, City Hall, and put together breakfast and stuff and then probably set up in the conference room, is that what you were thinking Mayor?
Conference room or in the, in the main office.
So that was her thought, so I guess we just need council's thoughts and feelings, I think we kind of settled on 8:00 AM last time, is everybody still okay with that?
Fine like that.
Yeah. Either 7:00 or 8:00 AM and we just have it at the new, at the new City Hall and that I would do breakfast for everybody, I would just cook there on the site and Josh and Sylvia would come in and help and that way it would just save the city some money.
What day is that going to be?
15?
October 15?
Yes, October 15.
October 15.
To me that sounds okay.
And we kind of just thought about that, just being that we, Denny's, they have a location, but we don't know if they would close it for us. Their dining area in the back and I think that would, oh, we thought maybe the batting iron, but that was too far, so I just said.
Go to the sites, they have a room upstairs for us, so we've used a few times, but this is fine.
Yeah, I think just to save money, just do breakfast and fruit and juice, coffee and dumplings and mayonnaise, that way whoever wants to get up during the whole time of the meeting, just get up and help yourself to something. We're at a restaurant, we can't do that, we have to just eat what they give us and that's it. So.
That sounds good.
Okay, what do you think?
Right.
Okay.
Teddy?
He won't be here, he doesn't care.
You're not gonna be here Teddy?
Nope.
Oh, you're gonna be hunting, right? Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and go on to Discussion of the Cemetery Ordinants, the fence from page 12 to 26.
Mayor, was that 7:00 or 8:00?
What's that? Are we gonna go 7:00 o'clock or 8:00 o'clock?
8:00.
8:00, okay, just because we don't know how long they last, how long do they usually last?
Four hours at the most.
We don't stay all day.
Okay, so that we work out.
7 to 11.
I said 7 to 11, I'll be at City Hall cooking at 5:00.
I say you're earning your mind trying to get everybody there at 7:00 in the morning.
Okay, we'll do 8.
8:00.
Okay. 8 I can handle.
All righty, so we'll go ahead and go on to B. So do we have any more discussion on that? On the ordinance?
Okay, I have a question, so I'm looking at these pictures and the first picture on number 19.
Thank you for that Madi.
On the top one, on the left, the top left, I think that's too much. And also on the 21, oh, 22. 23. Yeah, I think that's way too much, especially that number 23, because that really makes it hard for the guys to clean and I think we need to stop doing it.
Is this the recent, right? Your recent?
These were just taken, yeah, and I just want you to know on the record, I'm just ready seeing these for the first time because I haven't opened my packet, so I overheard Madi say that she had put some pictures in here, so thank you for that Madi, this really gives us a clearer view of the cemetery, of what we're dealing with on it.
Because the day that I was out there, so which I don't remember what holiday people were ready because the guys had to clean the inside and the fence and I told them, they don't do that, you guys have to keep it up if you're gonna have that big of an area. They can't be cleaning it up right now.
Was it a big fence or?
No, no, I'm saying like that one picture that I've been talking about.
Page 23?
I'm talking about page 23, 22 and 20, that one on the top. They were saying how come the weeds weren't pulled out and I said, well, if they don't do that, I mean, that's for you to take care of it.
I think that's kind of a little bit more than, they're hot on page 20, I would think.
I think maybe too, cut this down in the cemetery, not make it as big.
I think these little wire fences all the way around is not good because of that.
Yeah, no wire.
What's happening? They get stuck in.
Even with the string on the wheelwalk, they can't do walking around this, no.
They can't get close.
No wires.
Mine just has the two little white things, I think, yeah.
So I guess we need to.
19, bottom one?
Yeah.
And was that brought up after they have that, their flowers there and they're old for two weeks, they need to be thrown or the second week, what are you thinking?
Well, I think since I've started, I had Madi have forms ready and giving the ordinance and what is allowable and acceptable and what is not, if I'm correct Madi? So, we don't have, we didn't bring anything over, we give them the ordinance, it's on page.
So what are you gonna do to them if they don't follow that direction? I mean, is there gonna be a penalty or anything like that, I mean, if they're gonna keep doing it?
Do you think that we're supposed to start doing a penalty, if I'm correct, Josh or no?
I'm not sure what conversation was on that front, honestly.
So we've already reached out to a couple of people, people don't answer phones, so we, I don't know, have you sent out any letters yet? My thing was just kind of calling to kind of hurry it up. Yeah, so that way they can be cleaned up and picked up by the end of the year, so we can start fresh in the springtime, you know, with all the headstones and all the, all the old ornaments being removed from the cemetery.
Well, I think period, if the ornaments are old, you just need to dump them, that's it, there's no question.
I don't think anybody's going out.
I went out, I did go out and get ours done.
No, I mean, like all the other ones, because we've gone out to walk and look and a lot of the ornaments are really old and dated and no color.
Yeah, they're faded with the sun.
So I think if us just sending a letter out and putting it on the water bill, but some of these people don't live here in town.
We don't have their addresses either.
We don't have their addresses.
People have purchased plots, we don't have all of their addresses, they're not from.
But I'm sure it has to be a family member that's here that belongs to.
Well, no necessarily, because we tried reaching out.
Not always, we've got some out there that they come.
Yeah.
We tried, the teacher from, we used to have, her girls don't live here, if they try to get out here, it's not on that.
So I know we tried reaching out to a family a couple of weeks ago and we have no record of anybody. You know, we're trying to go off of the name on a headstone and see who purchased, so I think that's probably something we need to keep on bio now, from now on.
Who's purchasing phone number and stuff. And we do.
I know we need to get this one taken care of as soon as we can, so we need to.
What do we, what do we talk about now with the fencing? Is it, because I know Justin has a little black wrought iron one and it's as big as my two little white ones are, so if they're up on our property, right in front of our plot, that's what I'll clarify.
So I guess, I don't know, I mean, if they're around your spot and close up within your radius, I guess we'll have to go out and see it, I don't have a problem with it, what I have a problem with is the wire, the bottles, the beer bottles that are being dumped there.
They have beer bottles too.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Yeah, and those beer bottles.
People drinking them, I was.
I've seen people drinking them.
Yeah, so the beer bottles, what else?
Well, there's, common sense, we should know what we can't leave on there.
So, you know, like this one on page 23, that is like totally too much, that is a lot, a lot, I think they even have gravel now on there.
Oh, I didn't see that one there, I would tell you, but.
On 23 and 22, page 21, I think page 20, that's a lot, that's more than, they went way over.
Mine, are you talking about mine?
Is yours on page 20?
Oh, no, mine's on 20. Two little pieces of white fence, but it's right up close to the, and Justin has a little.
And I know we've already talked with the public works and they're just like, they don't have a problem just as long as they're up against the cement.
Yeah.
You know? Okay, okay, so.
So I was just noticing while I was looking at pictures, where is the picture of that rose bush?
I think it's gone. I didn't see it.
Before we got a picture, okay, because.
The one that was, the one that was brought, oh yeah, that one was removed a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
There was one out there somewhere, I can't remember exactly where it was, but I went out there the other day and there was, there was a rose bush that's up there, I can't remember what area it was.
Yeah.
Because I don't walk dogs.
So I think we're gonna go out there one more time before and just make sure how, how we want it, if we're gonna stay with the fences, is that okay?
I think we, like with a fence, I don't think it should be a full fence, like all the way around, I think we're talking fence, just like the little ones to the front or something. Because a full fence is I think when the guy's gonna.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll do that, or Josh, Madi, what do y'all think about that? Just two in the front, not all the way around, not a frame, just two like on page 26?
Which one is, do you, which one is the, because of the.
The black one? Take the sides off and just do the front. What do you think?
Well, I think it'd be easier for them to get to it, is it, because they're probably going items on the sides, you know, the workers, I don't know, it's a hard, but just to take a little away like that, I don't think that's so bad, is asking him to bring them or, you know.
So we can try it, see how it goes with the two and if it keep, if it goes back to everybody going back and doing the hole or all the way around and that, we'll let them know, everything's gonna get taken down because of, you know, not everybody can follow.
Well, at least they can put it up, but it's gonna be a fee every month for those fences to remove the fences in.
If they, yeah.
Yeah, the works can remove and put it back again, but it's gonna be a fee.
We can do that too. That's too much work for them to have to do.
No, that's too much work.
Too much work.
I mean, for them to have to do every one, they already have to weed whack and sweep and, I think everything, anything that's on our property, the pot, which that's what I call our property, needs to be up to us, the person that owns it.
To go weeding and everything.
Anything that's on mine.
It's fancy.
Yeah, I don't expect the public works to do, like the weeds I went and pulled, I don't expect them to do that, and just like the one with that fence, that wire fence.
The wire fence looks, looks pretty weird, page 20.
But I know that lady doesn't, I'm pretty sure that lady doesn't live here, because the one that I saw doing it was that Mrs. Martinez's daughter and she said she was doing it for France.
We'll pull them and they come in and complain and then we'll just take a picture and then we'll be like, okay, this is what it looked like, this is why we pulled it, or this is why we took the ornaments off, because this is not acceptable anymore, you know, we're, so we'll go ahead and do that. So we're gonna go ahead and take pictures now of the headstones that we're gonna be pulling people's things off, so when they come in, we'll have everything already and say, this is why we pulled your fence or this is why we pulled your, you know, your flower pods or whatever, because I mean, this is, there's some that are already.
How they grow, you see how the, the wire fence, how it's growing between, it's not really fancy.
Yeah, and there's weeds.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that. We'll do two fences in the front and then we will start pulling and take pictures of the before and they'll, they'll start coming in and complaining and we'll just let them know, you know, hey, I'm sorry, but, you know. Okay? All right, let's go ahead and go on to New Business. So we're gonna go ahead and Discussion of the October Dump Day. So we have material that's been provided, so have you all seen that already?
Go ahead. I'm saying Mayor, so I haven't actually given, I was, I didn't give anything out for it, it's, it's pretty straightforward when I looked at our numbers, so there was a total, I'll say it was a really small dump day last time, there was a total of 30, 11 of which came through for their second load, so we made $355 from residents, looking at the bill for that month, it cost us $438, so there, there was a loss, there was a total loss of $83.55, so, nothing crazy, but that's, I wanna say that's a lot less people than we usually get for, for Dump Day 2.
I think that's why Josh, because it was always a free day for years and then all of a sudden now we're charging.
So are, are the fees still the same though Josh, that's what we need to know.
But we did, so we did, the first load was $10 and then the second load was $5, so I mean, you could easily, if you, if you wanted to make sure that the city was at cost, you could just say $10 a load, you know, whether it's the first load or second load, and that should cover the difference, I would think, pretty easy.
So even if we did $10, the first load is $6, the second load?
You could do that too if we wanted, yeah.
I mean.
We're gonna have to look into that too, because you know they're closing.
Yeah, well.
The Granger dump.
I think we got, we did get something on that, but it hasn't yet, because that was brought to our attention.
Well, they're gonna close it, then we need to charge $10 each dump, because by the time they load and go all the way out there.
That's what it costs out there.
Yeah, so let's just do $10 each load.
Cost me $36 to be, so.
Okay, so $10 and then $6 every load after that, what do you think?
No, I agree with $10 each load.
Each load, yeah.
Each load.
If you know people are gonna bring more and more stuff and how many, how many loads, not every citizen is allowed to.
They can bring as many as they want, but the thing is we were getting out of town people.
One hundred percent, or bring a receipt or whatever you receive.
Yeah, that's what we did, so. I mean, because we were still $82 short, which that's not a lot, but.
It's kind of hard for citizens, so, because like, right now with all the ladies, I don't know how many bags of these we took, we have to get rid of, we can't, what are we gonna do with them?
Teddy? Has to mute.
6.
10 the first, 6 after?
I guess the fence will be, it is low.
Well, I mean, they're pretty big. Yeah.
They're pretty big, when people come, they're big.
Just like last time, look how few we got, is that gonna cut it down?
How many, how many did we have come out Josh?
And it's gonna be just pretty weight?
There was only 30, there was 30 total.
What was that Josh?
There was 30 total.
30?
Yeah, so we're not getting a lot. I don't, I don't know, I guess if we give them opportunities, they don't use it, it's on us, it's on them.
But I know if we were to say it's a free, I mean, everybody would be lined up.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
I remember those days.
And, I mean, they were just, and they were racing to get in line, you know, because it was gonna finish early.
So that means if it's, it's gonna be like, how many big cans are we gonna have, like three?
We have three out there, four, we had three for dump and one for.
If you don't use one, they still charge you five.
But we did, they did fill up, because we were switching them out this last time, so.
We had 3, 6, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, because we wanna get that done, what day Josh?
I don't think we've settled on a day yet, no.
It's not, it's not a day?
No, we're not gonna be on the 15th, yeah, we can't.
Oh, no, that's, I'm looking at something else, that's a meeting.
That's a meeting.
Sorry. So, I think 10 the first and 6 after?
Okay, let's see.
No tires and no.
Yeah, no tires, and the appliance guy, he was out there last time, yeah, he was picking up appliances, anybody who wanted to donate appliances.
Help, yeah.
So should we just do 10 and 6? Okay, 10 and 6.
Well, that's fine, 10 and 6 is fine.
Okay, so we'll do $10 a load, $6 after, okay?
So we'll, we'll put the ordinance for the next meeting then. And so then, do we wanna try and put a general day on, on when? Right now, or do we wanna just wait and see what staff say they have available?
Because October 15 is gonna be our meeting.
The following week?
The following week? Like in the 21st, 22nd?
What Saturday is that, what day does that?
It's gonna be on Friday or Saturday?
It's gonna be on Saturday, so that will be on the 22nd.
22nd.
How about, yeah, my, my, y'all are gonna have to do it, because my Saturdays are booked. Yeah, I have a lot of things going on and.
Before the 15th better?
The 8th would be good, but that's too soon, don't you think? Yeah.
To get the advertiser out.
Okay, and the 15th, well, we're gonna be in our meeting.
Because then you can send a notice on this water bill, no?
So the bill I rang went out?
Yeah.
Well, you just put it on the board, put one at the post office, put one on all the stores and leaders and, I mean, and make a big sign of put one here and one in front of the post office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have stuff on the 22nd, I know, I do, I know.
Can't do it on the 22nd?
You gotta keep in mind, we have to have time to make sure that Yakima Waste is ready too.
Yeah.
So we're gonna give them a little while to make sure that they have.
No, just postpone it till next year?
Weekend, what's the last weekend?
29th is the last.
29th, or you can even go into the, like, November 5th if you wanted to.
29?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they can do it, yeah, I can, so y'all can do it, so November 29.
October.
October 29.
Starting at 8 or 9?
I say 8, 8 to 11, I think is what we did the last time.
So people can go.
Yeah, so people can go right away, 8 to 11. Okay?
All right, I'll double check with Yakima Waste to make sure that works, so.
Give them a trailer form, bring it in.
Okay, and so, preliminary budget presentation, that's gonna go to the next meeting.
Yeah, right.
So, should Dawn talk right now? You wanna go ahead and, let's hope for you?
Sure, you bet.
Well, good evening everyone, nice to be back, I'm Governor LaDonne Yackla County Commissioner. The reason I wanted to come to you this evening is that you probably recall the last time I was here, I talked about the ARPA applications that we were requesting from cities and other entities throughout Yakla County, because we had some, some money that had come to us directly from the federal government and we were looking, one of the goals that we had was to try to partner with cities and help you with projects that you had. Right now, what, what we're looking at, I'll just kind of give you an idea, we received 152 applications for, and the total request was about $155 million, now all we have to work with is $35 million, so we're not gonna be able to do everything, but I wanna make sure we're able to do something. And so I've looked at, I looked at, we received one application from the city of Mapton and this was for water and sewer phase 2 improvements and the cost on it was about $4.75 million on that, I'll be honest with you, I, we're not gonna be able to do that much, but my thought was, if there's a portion of that, because I'm trying to, I don't have the application in front of me, I know there are a portion of it where you're looking at installing new electronic water meter readers, I think, other parts where you're adding, maybe upgrading some piping system within it, so I'm just kind of wondering if there's a portion in there that, if you could take a look at it, maybe, you know, maybe for a million dollars or maybe a little more than a million dollars, we might be able to do that much and help you with a portion of it, but we're not gonna be able to do the whole thing, but I, but I do wanna be able to, we do wanna be able to do something. I'm wondering, what I'm wondering is, is whoever prepared the application, if they could go back and look at it and see if there's a piece of that and say, you know, can you, can you help us with this, you know, this part of the project, do you think that's a possibility, we could do something like that?
So that, that was something we provided, my name is Tim Nady with Grant Osborn, so we assisted the city with that funding application. And knew, we know, just sorry to jump in here, we knew that there would be some sort of like, everybody would ask for money and then scale it, so part of why the city selected the projects they selected, and we recommended they selected, was that it's kind of scalable in nature. So that the idea was, well, let's ask for some things that would be good to have. Go ahead and shoot for a, a big project, because there's an economy of scale there. And then it's pretty scalable and that there are a lot of water and sewer lines that we figured, well, whatever money we get, we'll use what we can get. So to your point, I think we had, I don't remember the exact numbers, we had an AMR water meter system, so that would essentially let, instead of three day, well, actually, this is very timely, we're going to do the water system plan. Instead of counts, instead of staff spending about three days going around reading individual meters, it would convert the water meter system to a radio read, where essentially they'll just drive the streets with an iPad and it will just read the meters. And truly, because this Mapton's pretty flat, they'll just turn it on at city hall and it will probably read seventy-five percent of the meters just from, from here. And they'll just have to drive for the streets that it didn't pick up. And so it'll take a three days of public works time down to like, I would say three hours, but it probably will be less than that. That was kind of one project off the top. That will also help with some of your DSL tracking and some of your other things. We'll get into that in the, in the presentation tonight. I know Josh was excited about the idea of that, because it will, it'll make your billing a lot more efficient, less recording errors and get you to a level that most cities are at AMR systems now. Most cities don't do a manual read anymore. And then after that, we just looked at a lot of your, your kind of priority sewer lines, priority water lines, some improvements that would correlate with the, the main street job next year, replacing some little bit of water main on Main Street. Try to get ahead of that a little bit and just put together the big project. So if there's a smaller project there, we can very easily scale that back to something that's, you know, a benefit to the city and work. And I'd have to look back at the projects we included to say what the highest priority would be, but. Anyway, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's great. So I will be able to stay and watch the discussion, but that might be good. And maybe you can come up with, with an idea of, you know, what portion of that you can, you can submit to us. And you, you happen to have my email address?
I will likely do, but you can give that to me again before you leave.
Okay, sounds good. I, and I, you know, unfortunately.
Do you have? Josh?
I don't have my. Let me text it to you.
Okay.
I'll do that. I'll text my county email address to you. And if you could just forward that information. Yeah, I mean, because we're going to allow you to, you know, to, to kind of amend the proposal and say, okay, this is priority number one for us. And like I said, you know, if it's something that's, you know, you know, close to a million dollars, maybe a little more over, you know, but not too much over. I, I think I could feel comfortable pushing that to the other two commissioners, and I think we've got them, I can make that happen. That's awesome.
Yes, we're not excited.
Yeah, well, we felt, I mean, I, I felt, and we felt as a board that, you know, we really wanted to make this an opportunity to work with the cities. I've kind of taken the opportunity or the, the mentality that whether there is a big city or a small city, kind of going to look at about the same amount, because the fact is, I know the smaller cities have tighter budgets, they might need the help a little more. So that's, that's kind of the approach we have, you know. You know, if it's a million dollars here, maybe, you know, a million dollars for Grandview as well, you know, so that's, that's kind of the.
We could always use two million.
I believe you. You know, one thing we found, one, one, one thing we looked at is that, you know, there are a lot of good projects. There really were. Unfortunately, there's not enough money to do it at all, you know, but if we can do something, you know, help you, that would be, that'd be great. Okay?
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for letting me drop in on you again. All right, we'll see you.
That's nice. Okay, so we don't have any executive session, so with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six thirty-one.